Okay, good afternoon. It's April 2nd and there's regular session of Town Council. We will be out of here before 7 o'clock tonight, guys. Last time I watched Michigan play was way back in the Fab Five days. We all know what happened then. They lost. So cheers on for Michigan. Sorry, guys, all you Ohio State fans, Kansas fans.
You might be the only one, yeah.
Season not as I know what's going on.
The season was very abnormal. Okay, the first item on the agenda is roll call.
Alyssa?
Here.
Here.
Or Bill.
Uh, Bill?
Here.
And Markey?
Here.
And Tom?
Here.
Okay. With that said, and everyone is here, I only want to acknowledge a few things going on in the town. I think everybody knows DAV is here. We have the largest crowd ever for the 20th time that DAV has been in our community. And Tom was up there last Saturday and Sunday night.
Me too. Lunch today, Markey.
Wow.
Guys were looking for you. They're like, "Where's the mayor?"
Well, some people have to have a day job. But all in all, it was very, very impressive to stand up in front of over 450 wounded veterans and speak on behalf of our town to welcome all of our guests. So throughout the week, please welcome them. They love coming here and it's pretty awesome. Let's move on to presentations and this is called Wood Road Construction. And Will's going to give us an update on what's coming with construction season.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. As you all know, part of the entitlement requirements for Base Village is repaving the Wood Road, really from just above the Viceroy entrance, all the way around the corner till the Fanny Hill site. And we plan to start that work on May 1st. We have engaged Highell Construction as our contractor, have coordinated the town's final comments. We've got a couple of things to resolve with public works, just a couple of details. But we've gotten all that wrapped up and we'll be starting here on May 1st with that construction project. It should run all the way through October. We will be removing and replacing both sides of the road, as well as some sidewalk improvements and bus stop improvements to the road. We will never close the road down completely. It will go from two lanes to one lane for a vast majority of the summer. But that's kind of a brief recap on where we are with Wood Road. But we'll have that work done by November 1st in time for the 18, 19 ski season. The other thing I'll make mention of really quickly is we are, on the 23rd of April, and we coordinated this with town staff, but we are planning to shut down the entrance between Buildings 7 and 8 into the parking garage to remove that entrance and reinstall it, snow melted, which is also a requirement of the Base Village PUD. So we're planning on shutting it down April 23rd. We are working to reopen it by Memorial Day weekend. And we've coordinated that with transit, as well as public works. So that improvement will be done this summer, which I think hopefully will be a huge benefit next year.
Any questions? Or Will?
I'm gonna just reiterate one thing that he said, 'cause he said it fast. Wood Road will be down to one lane for the summer. And so we know that's gonna be a major impact. They have coordinated with the homes and condominiums up and down the road. We will continue to do that, but it will be, it will be an impact. I think there's gonna be signals-
There will be.
-to make it, to go back and forth. So we know it's an impact on Wood Road. We know that we're doing the best we can to do it, but we're just trying to get the word out so folks up and down that area understand that it's gonna be a summer of construction for them.
When do you anticipate that one lane to start?
I would guess sometime in June.
And Will, can you just give us a rundown on how the transit will be affected with the shutdown?
Of the transit center, yes. So in speaking with Snowmass Transit, they are actually not going to run the buses through the transit center for the duration of this closure. The only traffic that will come through the transit center will be people needing to access the parking structure. And we're just gonna bring them in on the opposite end of the transit center, through each lane, and route them through. So we'll be able to keep access to the parking garage open. Just the public transit won't actually run through the transit center. It'll stop at the bus stop that's right across from Treehouse.
Alright, thanks.
Sure. And just a reminder to everybody, and I don't say this lightly, but this summer will definitely be the busiest, or one of the busiest summers we have at Base Village, right? With Wood Road, the transit center improvements, once Snowmass were building 7 and 8, really starting in earnest and trying to get the Plaza 6, 4, and Limelight all complete. So this is gonna be a busy summer, but hopefully the result of that next winter will be a real transformation of Base Village and one that we're very excited about.
So how's all those buildings coming, Will? Are you ahead of schedule, on schedule?
We're right on schedule, Markey. So we're, our plan, excuse me, Mayor. Our plan is to deliver those again November 1st. And we are, we don't see any issue with that right now.
When does the plastic come down on the Limelight?
So the plastic will probably start to come down in late June.
Okay.
They're actually installing the masonry on the lower portions of the building right now. It's just covered by the plastics. You can't see that. We're also starting some stucco work, as well as some metal panel on the exterior, as we speak.
Well, that's pretty amazing.
Yeah, and one of the things to note is that, other than ice rink, most of the Plaza slabs have all been poured. And as the weather warms up, we'll start to waterproof all those and then start to lay in paver, snowmelt, and sand. But we got, we got the mild winter enabled us to get a good bit ahead with the actual concrete work on that plaza, which was pretty extensive. So we are grateful for that.
Okay, good stuff. Well, guys are doing a great job. I haven't heard any major complaints at all. Of course, you take all the complaints, so.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Will.
We're gonna move on to public comment. I'll see if anyone in the public would like to come forth. Come on up, come on up. Good to see ya. Anywhere in front of a mic.
My name is Tom Hills. I'm a longtime resident here at Snowmass Village.
You wanna sit down?
Tom, can you sit down in front of a mic or stand at that mic? You gotta talk into a mic, though, so they can hear you.
Yeah, my name is Tom Hills. I've been here about 30 years. And I have a concern I'd like to address with the council and perhaps look at maybe an agenda item that we can look at and study in the future, is that how we, how we get our visitors from Upper Village down to Lower Village, be they bicyclists, be they pedestrians, as it stands right now, we've got a pathway that goes through a parking lot, through Lot 4, then down a connecting trail to another parking lot. And I find both of those spots very dangerous for children on bicycles, as well as pedestrians. Plus, it's also disorienting to a lot of people, to people who are trying to figure out their trail maps. My idea would be to somehow reposition it so it actually goes along Brush Creek Road so people can actually see where they're going. It's, they have a much higher visibility. And if there's any problem, they're right up there on the road. It would, it would involve constructing some kind of a bike lane, or a pedestrian multi-use lane along Brush Creek Road. I think Mr. Mattson and I talked about that briefly in the past, so he understands my concern about that as well.
Tom, is this, just to clarify for myself, where we're talking about? Are we talking about a long carriage, a long carriageway from the mall to the Base Village?
I can only go down from the top of the village. All the concierges and the places that rent bicycles, they basically tell people to go through Lot 4 and then down the path. That's their-
Oh, to connect to the path. I follow you.
Yeah, exactly. And most of the people who are trying to get to the rim trail, they're totally lost down there. Where if they're elevated and can see the rim trail and it aligns with a map, they're not so spatially challenged as a lot of them are right now.
Thank you.
Good comment, yes. Thank you very much. Hey, Steve, come on up.
Hi. On that topic, on that topic about transportation and so on, one of the big issues that has come up at top of the village where I own a unit, is that people up there, in order to be able to get down, they have to get in their car typically. They're not gonna walk down and the system, transportation does not go that far. So we did a poll at the top of the village, or some kind of a connection with owners. Majority of them said if they're gonna get in their car, they go to Aspen for dinner, shopping, everything else. So we've got about three-quarters of the top of the village, which is four buildings of about 30 units each, like 118 units, all told. Majority of the people that stay there, rent there, and own there, go to Aspen. And so we lose them as an addition to our economics of our community. And I think we need to think about the possibility of finding some kind of a very creative transportation system that will keep people, number one, out of their car, and make it fun and easy and profitable for us to have people go and get on some kind of interesting vehicle like that, like they haven't, and if you've been to San Francisco, I used to ride one every day going to work, mindless, about almost the same distance from Base Village to top of the village. And it was a fantastic thing, filled up every day. I think we look at that and we think, do we want to improve things like rentability at places like Top of the Village, or we do not care? Is that the case?
So I have a question for you. So did we ever have bus transportation up there, or?
We've had occasionally bus transportation.
Yes.
And it's ineffective.
That's what I thought, isn't it?
If you go talk to the people at the top of the village at the guest house there, people basically have said to them, "We don't know when they're gonna show up. We don't know where they're gonna go. It's easier for us to get in our car and just go." But I think that years and years and years ago, when I managed Top of the Village, it was back in 74, 75, there was a discussion about putting in a transportation system on the, right on the ski slope.
Right.
That went from Base Village all the way up to-
Top of the Village.
Approximately the top of the village. They gave up halfway. It goes to the mall, as you know.
Right.
That's where it stops. And so if you're at top of the village, or many of those places up there, get in your car. I don't think we need that, Snowmass. Snowmass needs more business to be stopped right here, not go to Aspen, or Glenwood, or Passalt. And it's up to the city to do it. That's you all.
Clint, this new Google Maps thing that I saw an email on today, this last few days, would that be of any help to these people?
I assume so. I mean, the app is through Google Maps. You can, when you open up your phone, Google Map, you hit the transit versus the drive map, and it'll tell you all the transportation, public transportation options. So Google Map would call out Route 5 that goes up to top of the village and say, "The next bus will be," you know, it'll point on the map, "right there at whatever time it is, 20 after the hour, or whatever time it hits that." So it would be more information to help that.
So Steve, how do we get that kind of information to the owners and guests at Top of the Village?
Call the top of the village. I mean, Markey and people up there are very, very helpful. And I have every single address of every single owner up there now anyways, as I own a unit there. I think what you all, very, very few of the people who own there, like one, I think, lives there. So they have no vote. All the people that are owning there have no vote to connect with you at all. So they get no help.
Well, they have the, they do have the Part-Time Residence Advisory Board. I mean, that is supposed to be-
So is that part of the, you say Part-Time Residence Advisory Board, are they at the top of the village or throughout the village?
They are throughout, they are throughout the village, all part-time residents.
Okay. Well, then work up there. Again, if you went up there and you look at, you might want to ask them for their records for occupancy over the last umpteen years, and even before we incorporated. I think you'll find, from my records, I can show it to you, but the rentals were much better then than they are today. So I don't think we, the town, have helped them at all.
Quick question, Clint. How far up does our shuttles go?
Top of the village.
Top of the village. So, and then Top of the Village has their own shuttle service too, Steve.
Let me ask a question of all of you. Do you ever watch every morning? I go out and I walk every morning. Do you go out in the morning, do you ever watch those vehicles? I would say about 95% plus, they're empty.
Which vehicles?
Do you mean shuttles?
Empty, empty, empty. You walk out there and go walk down the street and watch those buses go by. Here's a bus that's maybe could handle, I don't know how many, what's a big bus cab? 30 people, 40 people? And they have three or four. These buses are going everywhere and they're empty.
Well, I see a lot of people on the buses, on the number three.
Okay. Shall I take some photos of it? I go out every morning and I walk probably a couple miles every day. And I see those buses go by, maybe 20 of them every morning, maybe more.
Well, the question is this, though. We have service that goes there. So what are you saying? Because they're empty because of, because people don't want to ride them, or they're not-
They don't. You're the ones that should interview or investigate why that's happening. They're empty. You go out there every morning, go out tomorrow morning or whatever, and walk down the street and watch every one of those buses. And when you watch those buses, make account of how many people are on board. I do it every single morning. I go out and I walk. And most of them are empty. I'd say at least 80-plus percent empty.
We probably need to put this on an agenda item.
What I can do is, I'll get you the Route 5 numbers.
We can give you that kind of information. But I thought, Mr. Stay, you were gonna talk about something else this afternoon?
Well, there's a number of things I'd like to talk about. I don't want to take you all night.
I didn't know this was-
Okay.
This is a resort. I think I need to convince you all that this is not just a residential district, because most of our property owners who pay most of our taxes throughout this village have no vote. They're absentee. Whether it's homes, whether it's condos, especially condos, or townhouses, or whatever, they don't have a vote. They can't change anything. If they can't change anything, we dictate to them whatever in hell they want to talk. So we do it. Sorry to make your day bad.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, anybody else? I got some more people in the back. Thank you, Steve. Come on. Go here or over to that mic, or any of these mics?
It's all warm.
Thank you. How kind of you.
Hi, my name's Susan Hirsch. I live at Seasons 4. And as I understand it, today, this is the last meeting where you're taking resident input on the development up here. Is that right?
We'll have a lot more. This is, tonight, we're gonna talk about the resolution regarding the conceptual plan, or sketch plan.
That's what I want.
And then from here, then moves into PUD, then there's tons of process and public input. But go ahead.
Okay, so anyway.
Mr., if you're gonna comment on this, you should, this is, this little portion's for things that aren't on the agenda. So the developer will make a presentation here in a few minutes, and that's the appropriate time if you're gonna comment on that development.
During the public hearing.
Yeah. Can you-
You might have to wait a few minutes.
So I have to wait? Because I understood that this was the time I had to give my opinion on things.
No, let's go with the agenda item. It'll be on in about 10 minutes.
Okay.
This is for stuff that's not on the agenda? All these topics are not on the agenda?
And this, I'm talking about the development up here, not at Base Village.
Center, yeah.
Okay, I'll come back.
Okay.
Is that my center?
Yep, yes.
That's about 10 minutes away.
I better sit down so you guys can see me a little better.
Yeah, you're so tall.
I'm, good afternoon, everyone. My name's Thomas Kosic. I am Metro District 2's president. First of all, I'm Madam Mayor. This town is very well represented by you. I was very impressed both on Saturday and Sunday with you not just going through the motions, if genuinely you cared about what was going on out there. And the veterans knew that. We've all been to too many events where elected officials get up and they speak for five minutes, you don't know what in the world they said, and you can tell they just wanted to get the heck out of there. So I wanted to make sure that I pointed it out to you, and I thought that was fantastic. It was really good.
Well, thank you very, very much.
And also, what a pleasure to be in front of the best town attorney in the country, Johnny Dresser. Does it get any better than that, anyway?
But he would die you.
It's getting a little deep.
Anyway, again, before we go any further, I am a resident of Snowmass Village. I've owned property here for 16 years. I am a voter for the last five. And a quick refresher, Metro District 2, a lot of people say, "What does Metro District 2 do?" Well, it's the financing district. And the purpose of it is to paying all the capital cost of what's going on across the street of Base Village. In the past, and as you guys are well aware, it's public knowledge, past developers, past attorneys, past accountants, past banks, never acted in the best interest of what goes on over there. What I'm here today is to remind all of you that there are almost 10 of us, I think at the last count, there's eight of us, who actually live at Base Village, who are locals. So when we make these decisions, we're not just making decisions on the folks that fly in here for three or four weeks out of the year. There's nine of us that are just as local and as important as the folks who live up here, or down the street, or live at Horse Ranch, or anywhere else. And we're having to live with what's going on out there. And let's, when you say, "What's going on at Capitol Peak, and what's going on at Hayden Lodge, and what's going on in Metro District 2?", well, for the last 10 years, taxpayers have been fleeced. There's no other definition. They've been fleeced. And we're gonna get this taken care of through the lawsuit. It's gonna take us a couple years, but the taxpayers are going to see some results off of that. But I wanted to ask you guys to please, when you're thinking about Building 6, I watch, kinda shows how much time I spend on airplanes, I watch you guys on the replay. The replays on the website are fantastic, 'cause you can really keep up with what's going on. But I watch on the planes, and I've heard for the last year, all these ideas about Building 6. Now, while I'm not a Warden School, a business graduate from Penn, I can tell you that I've not heard one idea that tells me it will, forget about making a buck, 'cause that's not important, there has not been one presentation that's told me that they'll be able to be self-sustaining. You know, I hear, "We need $500,000, we need $700,000. How about if we do this? How about if we think about selling that property? And what do you think about building some residential housing for the folks who can't afford, who work here, whom can't afford it? Why don't we look at maybe paying down some debt? Why don't we do something really, really crazy? Now, don't throw me out of here when I say this, but why don't we think about maybe helping out some of the original owners at Base Village who were promised a pool for almost 10 years? And have been, for lack of a better word, and Mayor, please excuse me, have been screwed over and over and over and over again. So keep in mind, as you're going through the coming weeks right now, and you're gonna be making a decision on Building 6, do we need a community center that's gonna cost us a half million or three-quarter of a million dollars a year? And think about, are these sites really sites that are going to generate interest on a daily basis? While every idea I heard are great people, John Masters has the greatest show on Saturday night with Ski Bump Theater, is not a bigger fan of John than me, there's nothing that anyone's laid out that is not what I call a one-and-done. You visit it once, you never go back. If we're truly worried about helping the residents of Snowmass Village, please, think about selling this. Build some housing. Do something for the folks here, instead of spending more money, and more money, and more money. I honestly think if everyone sat back and thought about when they had the opportunity in the past, they would've taken the money and not taken the building. Because that would've been a smart business decision. And before I say goodnight and thank you, guys, I want to also tell you that there's more to come on this legal suit. Everyone that's been named in the suit, there's gonna be more, and they have been advised. And I want everyone to know, this is not a threat, but as Metro District 2 president, I am absolutely shocked on a daily basis. When you sign up to be, to represent the board, the first thing on each of yours, and on mine also at Metro District, is to represent and do the best in fiduciary duty for the taxpayers. That has not happened for almost 10 years. Nine people could run for the board of Metro District. You know how many people run for the board? You want to know why? Because there's only one person who earns his living outside of Aspen-Snowmass, who's not afraid of retaliation, not afraid of anything else. So I'll carry the water, believe me. My wife yells at me on a weekly basis, as your spouses do also, and say, "Why are you doing this?" Because it's the right thing to do. So, Madam Mayor, Council, thank you very, very much for your time and for all your hard work. And please, in the coming weeks, think about what I said about Building 6. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Okay, any other comments? Okay, let's move on to draft agendas, consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Yeah, I'll move to approve.
Okay. I know there's several items I do want to bring out.
Me too.
Okay. Do I have a second?
You need a second?
Yeah, I do need a second, okay.
I'll second.
Bob?
Yeah, I would like to take the, the item relative to lots 25, 26, 27.
Item 5E.
Item 5E, out of the consent agenda.
Okay. Anyone else? I'll tell you what I want to talk about, and that's the draft agendas. And particularly, hold on, we went back to sleep over here. Hold on here, draft agendas. Oh, those are the minutes. Wait, minutes and the draft agendas are, oh, there they go. Okay, for the consent agenda, next week, the work session? How many will be here? Is everybody here?
No, I'm out next week.
Shoot. What I would like to really do, where I see NEXUS letter of agreement, I would really like to get to, I want to put various options on for Building 6. We've been messing around with Building 6 way too long. One option that I, one is NEXUS. We know that East West might be interested. We know there might be, which was articulated last session, that NEXUS might be interested in a purchase. The other is a suggestion to go ahead and get a kitchen built and contract with a restaurant at 8%. And then perhaps moving Discovery Center down, perhaps? And some other items that could be a variety of consideration. And I think we gotta talk about it next week. We're messing around with this, and we're not going anywhere. I don't know about the rest of you.
Well, I mean, I happen to agree that it's taking a long time to even get a good handle on a direction. I really, you know, I know that you would like to add into the options, the town operating, you know, renting, leasing out the restaurant space, and essentially operating the rest of the building.
For short term?
Well-
To be determined.
To be determined, but, I mean, that's exactly what we were trying to avoid. And I wouldn't go any further than that, but-
So next week is a work session. Is that something that we could do in a work session?
We need to talk about, what are the options and where are we going?
Yeah.
I think we need to. And I think we also need to get evaluation on the building in case we've decided-
So beyond what's listed during that work session, just says a letter of agreement, you want, you want a little bit more in depth?
We really need to have a conversation about what the heck are we doing?
So, me thinking along the lines of the work session, we try to get out of here by 6 o'clock. I'm all in favor of what you're saying. I'm also in favor of the update from RAFDA being either, if it's not short, then let's table that for another day and just make it all Building 6.
The RAFDA, is that because of the ballot initiative?
Yes.
So, what's involved with that, real quickly? I mean, is it gonna take 30 minutes, 45 minutes?
30-minute update, I guess.
It's a three and a half, three and a half to a 5%.
Okay, that leaves us an hour and a half, and I don't think that's enough time for...
Well, I think we could move that RAFDA discussion. The ballot initiative doesn't have to be written until August. That's when it has to be done.
Yeah, and I think what they're trying to do is make sure that everybody's up to speed, they're going up and down the valley, giving presentations, and this was the date we scheduled to fit with them. If you say, "We gotta reschedule," we can certainly do that, but it was just, it's their effort to keep you all up to speed on what they're thinking about.
Well, I think it's important that we have an in-depth conversation about it. We seem to get off-track when we get into the, you know, the intricacies of the, of the deal. So, I'm in favor of it. I'm sorry Bob's not gonna be here, but I think it's important.
I think we, yes, it probably won't be the first conversation, but we'd need to.
No, I absolutely agree. I absolutely agree. It's, we need to do it.
Yep.
So let's move RAFDA.
I agree.
I'm at the board meeting the following Thursday, so... Okay, so that's my comment about the agenda items. There were also minutes, also part of the consent agenda. Did anyone have any suggestions on minutes?
Yeah, I had a couple of typos.
Okay.
On the minutes for March the 5th.
Okay.
Let me find it. On the second page of those minutes, Barb, line 31, in the middle of the line, I think it's two with 1O, and line 33, I think the member absent is Tom Fredstein.
Yes, not Bob.
Not Bob.
Well, he is. May he rest in peace.
That's a, a much consternation at the Planning Commission, as some of the more senior members continue to call Tom Bob, because Bob was on the Planning Commission with some of those more senior members for a number of years, and they turned bright red, so that might actually have been what was said.
Might've been.
Yes.
Should we correct the record, though?
Yes, absolutely.
That's all.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, we've pulled out 5E from the consent agenda, so what we will need to do is listen to 5E, or do we want to approve?
You can approve the balance of the consent agenda.
Why don't we do that? Okay?
I'm fine.
Okay. All in support of everything else but 5E.
And Madam, this needs to be a roll call, if you have a second reading of the ordinance for franchise.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry. Thanks.
That wonderful franchise. I wish I was reading the franchise agreement. That tells you how bored I was one evening.
Fascinating stuff.
We need to do something on fixing the cost increase of Comcast.
You could read it tonight about 7:20.
You're gonna be chairman for Michigan. That's who you got on your...
I know, don't tell him, remind me.
We have a motion on the table, we have a second, we're going to move forward with approval of everything through 5D, and then I see Michael, T. Michael is here, we're gonna talk about 5E, in terms of that. With that said, let's do roll call for the ordinance, and then do the balance of the approvals.
Alexa?
Yes.
Bill?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Sorry.
All in support of...
You fooled me, you were going down the line.
I know, I thought it was. All in support of the consent agenda, all the way through to item 5D, then?
Aye.
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 Okay. That's approved. Okay, T. Michael, you wanna come up and talk about these lots? And what we're really trying to do is a little complicated. Well, it's not, yeah, I don't know if you all got it, but...
It's not real complicated, but it's been a long journey. I'm happy to answer any questions you have. Jim has some information that he had on one of his files. I didn't actually bring the application, but you already have it, so I didn't think I needed to redo it.
If you can point the mic to you, that would be lovely.
Oh, I thought it was stuck, sorry. So, I'm not sure where to begin.
Well, if we could just kinda get a map up first, and where it is, and get the pointers going.
Sarah Mouse?
I think Jim's got it.
Jim's got the mouse.
I got the mouse, I'm sorry.
Oh, you got the mouse.
You got the mouse?
I don't care.
So this is the first three lots on Faraway Road, after you pass Ridge Road. And the Nyro family has owned the one lot since 1977, I believe it was. Bought the next lot in 98, built that house, and then bought the third house and lot, number 25, some years later, and tore that house down. Ended up with a three-lot compound.
You're good.
I'm good. So, Ray unfortunately died a couple of years ago, and the kids aren't real interested in keeping a three-lot compound, and they're trying to set it up in a way that they could sell one or the other of the houses, at least, and go forward.
Is that the house with the split driveway?
It has a split, has a shared driveway.
Yep, yep.
There will be supplemental legal agreements that are gonna be necessary between owners. One of them is the driveway and driveway maintenance. There's also some snow melt that isn't split down the middle, as far as which boiler operates, which part of the system. But those are really not issues relative to the zoning parts, they're just landowners are gonna have to deal with that as they go forward.
Yeah, I was down, I was down there on Saturday, went down and looked at it.
It's changed a lot. You know, part, part of this was Ray being Ray. There are structures that have been built on Lot 25, or onto the edge of Lot 25, I guess it is. They're outside of the building envelope currently, on Lot 26. He built a custom pizza oven, and a couple retaining walls, and a nice big patio, and planted about a billion trees to create this little secluded place. We looked at tearing all that out, actually, and turning it back into two distinct lots, and it was actually more expensive to go that route than it was. It depreciated Lot 26 much more so, because of building a house on Lot 25, in addition to having the additional cost of re, undoing everything. It didn't make sense for them. So, that is sort of parallel to the original Town Council Resolution 6A. Got the date on that at the moment. And we went through this whole process to adjust the building envelopes, and change the property lines between Lot 26 and 27, even submitted building permits for both of those houses back then, based on that approval. But the approval never got recorded, at the end of the day. Town Council signed off on CO, or not Town Council, but Town Staff, gave us COs, did all the notes, said everything looked fine, go on. But we never recorded it, we being whoever was supposed to do it, I'm not even sure who that is, but nobody did. So, this, this is to try to do, we started trying to just do that over, and then we found other things that we had to deal with, and then we found other things we had to deal with, and this is actually our fourth application on this three-lot parcel. I mean, I can go into as much or as little detail as you want, I know you got a game to get to in two hours, so I was trying not to get too carried away.
So, there's something, which one has the 11-foot adjustment to it? Is that...
That's that lot line right there, yes.
Okay.
And that 11-foot was done before the house was built on 26, and the permit application for lot, for the new house on, or the second house on Lot 26, wouldn't have been possible without that alignment, realignment of that property line, and a shift of property areas in order to change the FARs. So, it was acknowledged as, yes, this was approved by the Building Department, but it was never recorded.
John, who's the responsible party for recording this stuff? Is it the town, or is it the town or the...
It's usually on the applicant. A lot of times, they'll submit it for final review by community development staff, and then they'll do it, the staff will do it. But usually, the condition is that the applicant shall record.
And that was true in 6A.
So, Michael, so the one part of it is this confusion about recording what happened in '95.
Mm-hmm.
Why can't we just do that? And that puts, that, doesn't that put the property exactly in the place that it currently There's two houses, right? They conformed, as I understood, they conformed to the building envelopes, and the setbacks, and so forth, of the 1995 proposal, or...
Sort of. Something happened between the Town Council approval and the permit submission that changed the setback by five feet. I don't know what had happened, I don't know when, or who, or how, but the documents submitted, on there, you can see it's 25 and 25, and on this one, that number got changed to 30 and 20. So there was another shift that happened as part of the permit application. I don't know why, or how, or who. Obviously, we did the drawing, so we submitted it that way, but, but the town approved it that way, so something must've happened to say that was okay.
So what we're trying to do is clean this mess up?
Yeah.
Make it legal.
And, so I couldn't do it exactly, to answer your question.
Okay.
I could do it close to what you did in 6A, and solve that part of the problem. It would also have to include some of the retaining walls that are for driveways and different things in between those two houses, which is also part of this application, which was not part of that application. That was actually our original submission, was just to do a variance application, to shift the lot line, change the building levels, be done with those two, and then come back and figure out what to do with 25. The problem with 25 at the moment is that there are structures, per land use code, outside of the building envelope, even across the property line for that matter, that would then be illegal. So, we needed to find a method to try to leave those there, and it was either to join the two lots, and let them then become part of a revised building envelope, and no longer illegal, or tear them out. Those are the two choices. And tearing it out seemed like a waste, and it wasn't any better.
What are those buildings for?
The only, the structures that we're talking about are...
Do you have the pictures of the backyard?
Yeah. So, they're retaining walls, which are called structures. They're about five feet tall, so they're not allowed to be in that neutral zone between setback line and 50% of the property line, thing that we do from time to time. That top-left picture is one of the walls that was built. It goes out probably 30 feet, that little thing with a curve on the top is a pizza oven that he built back over and through there. So all of those are structures, per land use code, outside of the permitted area, outside of the building envelope and its extension. The patio is an engraed patio, it actually goes across the property line. So we have things that we would have to, had to deal with if we'd have gone the two different application process, and dealt with one, two lots in one place, and two lots in another. The other complication of that was that each of those approvals went to a different entity. One was coming to you, and one was going to the Planning Commission, and they were each contingent on the other. So, we couldn't figure out a process to go through without passing the ball back and forth four or five times, which is why we decided along the way that maybe this application could consolidate everything into one, and get it all taken care of.
And there's no intention to build on 25, right?
The, there's, the increase in the allowable building area for the new Lot 26, which is now 4250, would go to 5500, which is a reduction overall, what could've been there before, but it would allow a slight expansion of the existing house, and it might go on part of 26. Not another structure, no, no single-family units, or guest houses, or any of that kind of stuff.
Yeah. I mean, access to that lot is, would be pretty much impossible, anyway.
There used to be a driveway, when George Brown, I think it was, owned that house before. It came right off the intersection at Ridge Road, and just went straight up that bank. It was a nasty place for a driveway, so that, it's a good thing that that one's gone. So there's really no way to get on Lot 26, except to go through Lot 25 at this point.
So, Michael, the, the proposed new building envelope for this 5,500-square-foot house incorporates the current 4250 house, plus some space which covers like the patio, and these other theoretic, you know, potentially illegal structures?
Yeah, go back to the...
Hi.
You gotta take the mic.
This pink line...
You gotta use the microphone.
Was the one that was approved. Can I do that? No, I have to take it. Could I have the mouse, but, okay. All right. The, this brown line in here was the original building envelope, up around there. This one was the one that was approved per the 6A. What we're requesting is to use the 6A boundary on that edge, go straight across, down, and then follow the parallel to the road on that side. This is the existing patio, and those are the existing retaining walls. So all of the things that are now non-conforming would become conforming within those building envelopes.
So what's, what is item 3 and 4 on your pictures? Are those, are those also retaining walls? Sorry.
So, item 4 is this set of boulders.
Yeah.
So, beyond the end of the structural retaining wall of stone, there's a series of boulder walls that are in the bank right in here. So to make this flat, he did some cut on this uphill side, and did some fill on the downhill side to create the flat area. Part of that was retained by a series of boulders in through there. And number 3 is really just looking back at the main house, you can see it in the background, just to give you a perspective on the flatness of the yard. Boulders on the right, patio, and then the main house.
So there, so where there's a, on, on the actual drawing itself, where there's that line, where, that looks like a wall, that's not a wall?
That's not a wall. It's, as far as I could tell, it's like a bocce thing, or something?
A bocce court?
It's six inches tall, on the ground, it's, it's nothing.
So when I was trying to piece this thing together, the original setback on Lot 25 was a 50-foot setback, I think. And you're now wanting to change that back to a 20-foot setback?
From where?
Well, on, from, from Faraway Road. So the front, the front setback.
I, you know, we have a site plan that showed the original setback on 25.
Uh-huh. That's this, this one.
That, yeah, that would've been the original setback on 25.
Right, right. So, is that, does that setback, if you kept a 50-foot setback, would, on Lot 25, would that impact, or how would that impact the movement of the building envelope that you're trying to achieve?
So, if you came across here, up and back...
Yeah.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't, you wouldn't incorporate all of the existing structures within it.
You would, or you would not?
Would not.
You would not, so then those would have to come down.
Yes. We most, well, they're mostly engraed, honestly, at that point, it's the big patio, and the fire ring, and stuff like that, it's not a structural structure, but it's on, on a different crossroad, level. Since...
Why would you want a 50-foot cut, setback?
I, I don't know why any, I don't know why you would. It's, Ray planted so many trees between the edge of the road, and that flat section of ground up above, you cannot see that lot from anywhere.
No, you can't.
So, even if something were to get built out there, and I can tell you from an architectural standpoint, it would be very difficult to do that, because you can't, you can't not attach it. So, any new structures are gonna well be back on Lot 26. You're really never gonna see anything on 25. We just wanted to incorporate and encase all of the engraed and retaining walls.
So there, there were a couple of things in here that honestly, really confused me, because I don't recall ever seeing things like this in, you know, land use applications. So there's this whole raft of title insurance information. Why is that... Why is that there?
One of the requirements for submissions for us, for almost all of them, is proof of ownership. And title policy is the way to do that. I only need one page, honestly, but we had the whole thing as a PDF file, so... Because we're not burning paper anymore, we can put lots of pages in there.
Okay. And I guess, Julianne, this is a question for you. Why is this in the consent agenda? It's so convoluted.
Well, we don't believe that there's any opposition to the direction of this particular case, so we thought that could probably be reviewed and handled on consent. Well, it's got a lot of stuff in it.
It's a lot of stuff. And as a matter of fact, I think in the staff report that you felt that there is a... I guess there was... There wasn't a financial effect to the town, but I would disagree that there is a financial effect, because if the other... If the other lot were its own lot and a home was built, there would be another... There would be a whole nother set of property taxes.
Okay. So what other questions do we have for?
I have a question for staff in regards to what you have listed. Numbers four, five, and six under the 16A 5530. Does it... I'm trying to figure out, in reading all this, if it complies with numbers four, five, and six.
Are you on page 110?
I... Actually, I have a spending time with my PUD book. I'm referring to the PUD 16A 5530, and referred to numbers four, five, and six. And I don't know how that complied. I'm a little confused with how that complied. When it talks about not to increase where, Michael, you said it'll give the opportunity for that lot to be 1,000 square feet more. Well, when I'm looking at number six, so I'm not increased the total allowable floor area on a lot, or lots affected, but without that long paragraph, whatever, but I'm just looking at that increase of 1,000 square feet. According to number six, it kind of contradicts... Am I not reading it right, John?
No, you can't skip the rest of the paragraph, because it says beyond the total allowed without the exception. So those two lots...
I'm skipping it just for the sake of...
Okay, but those two lots together have a greater floor area.
It's actually a reduction of almost 3,000 square feet in total house area.
With the house not being there.
Of what the original potential was with two lots could have been 75,000... 7,500. Keep adding zeros today. And now we're down to 55. So it's a much... It's a smaller impact on the mountain, if you will.
Now, my question was to staff. I just wanted to make sure that we were going with four, five, and six, if I didn't read that correctly or not, and that was my question.
We reviewed it on the proposal that was being presented against the review standards, and with the double lot or lot combination, there are size restrictions for... Not really size restrictions, but based on the size of the lot, the floor area is capped, as Michael suggested, to 5,500 versus the 8750. I mean, if you calculated out the FAR maximum for those... For that two-lot combination, it would calculate the 8750, but they are capped by the zoning code and by the underlying SF 30 Zone District.
Capped at 3,900?
No, 5,500 for the two-lot combination lots 25 and 26, but they're retaining the 3,900 square foot cap for Lot 27, although that's just revised slightly by about 21 square feet.
So can I ask just a clarifying question? So on six, when 6A was approved, even though it wasn't recorded, the things that you built, the pizza oven and the patio and all that other stuff, that was done knowing that it was outside of the building envelope?
I would assume that's true, yes. I didn't have anything to do with it.
Okay.
So we're trying to... Did Ray understand that he wasn't supposed to do that after he bought that other lot? He should have, but I, you know, I assume he did.
So he bought the lot, and he figured he can do whatever he wants to with it?
Right.
Yeah, I would say.
Yeah. Because, you know, I look at this, and the first... The first part of 16A 5530 is the exemption is necessary. The exemption shall be necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of the substantial property rights of the applicant. Okay? In the discussion from staff, staff says by combining lots 25 and 26, the applicant achieves increased buffering from adjacent properties to the west and the southwest. Well, those properties are open space. So I don't understand the value... I don't understand how you're getting... How increasing buffering to open space fits the concept of the exemption being necessary.
Can you go back to the...
Oh, the original?
The open spaces?
I believe there's a lot down here as well. I mean, it's increased buffering, no matter what the uses are on adjacent properties, in our opinion.
It certainly is increasing the buffering to the house right across the street, of which there were two, and to the Ridge condominiums across the other side, directly to the west. It's helpful, but has values. It's objective.
Well, that's... There's a pretty good-sized corner there that's all open space on, you know, from the edge of... From the western edge of 25 to Ridge Road, seriously, to actually...
If you can go back to the exhibit, too. Yeah. What this map doesn't show is the addition to the Ridge condos, right?
Oh, yeah, that's true. The one across the street.
There's a single-family home that was added there when they did their...
That's true, on the opposite side.
And across the way is...
I'm not... Not saying that gets to substantial, because that's yours.
Yeah.
But you do need to understand that it might... The open space might not be as great as it appears, without knowing that that lot has been developed, and there is a single-family home right there on that little...
Yeah. That's... That house is sort of built into the side of the hill.
It is. I understand, but it's not reflected here, so I just wanted to...
Appreciate that.
Enhance the picture a bit orally.
And the trash structure is... Where's the dumpster?
You can see it up there.
Let's see. Right here.
Yep, right over there. So you really don't have a lot of open space. That's a steep slope going down.
Now, see, that picture shows the...
The other house right here.
Building envelope for that house.
Yeah, but I think 25 is on the other side of that hill.
Yeah.
I don't know.
So what are the questions? We're going to get moving on this.
Well, I think Bob's question is basically, is, you know, additional privacy as substantial property right?
Yeah, I mean, when I boil this down, I think the property owner decided he bought a piece of... He bought a piece of property, he could do whatever he wanted with it, and he did. And now he's... Now, now they're asking us to fix it.
The family's asking us to fix it.
To fix it, yeah.
The only... As far as the 25 and 26 part, the only thing that... Shouldn't say only, but he could fix it by tearing out a little bit of patio and a couple of retaining walls. It would still be the same two lots, and we would be building a 4,000 square foot house on that lot next door, instead of leaving it as open space. I'm sure that's better.
Those structures would still be considered non-conforming, but under current conditions, but if this is accepted, be considered legal non-conforming, it'd still be non-conforming according to the current code.
Who owns the land right now?
Neurotrust kids.
The kids, that's what I thought. And the kids, do they plan on turning around and selling all this?
It's on the market.
It is on the market at the moment.
I saw a sign out there.
They would like to sell one. Honestly, they'd like to keep the old house that they grew up in.
I mean, is that practical? Because the listing shows these are all connected. These two houses are connected.
You can do it legally.
We couldn't represent that they weren't, because there were all the retaining walls that were joint and all this other stuff. We couldn't sell off anything without the buyer's attorney coming in and wanting to get it cleaned up. So we're trying to take care of things like this before they go into listing whenever possible, and not wait until it's in due diligence, and then it becomes a negotiating tool, all the rest of the crap comes with that.
So basically, this is a cleanup?
We're not asking...
Is that a fair statement? So I have a motion for approval.
Yeah, I'll motion to approve. I've been to this property, I'm familiar with it. I get what they're trying to do, and I think it's the right way to clean it up.
Thank you, Bill. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lisa. Any further questions, issues? Call in support, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay.
So it's 5-0, or 3-2?
It's 3-2.
I said aye.
Okay. And you said... You guys just...
We were just...
It's 5-0.
Just started a fight here now.
I'm just making sure it's 5-0.
We were late to the party.
I'm just making sure we heard that.
They had to wake up. Okay, that is approved. Okay, we're going to move on.
Thanks, Michael.
Thank you, Michael. You want to come back up here?
Grab a mic on your way by.
Okay, next item is town council reports and actions.
I don't have anything.
What do I have? Well, let's see. There was a pretty interesting Northwest COG meeting a week or so ago. We had a discussion about e-bikes, and I saw today that a result of a combination of survey and discussion and various other things came out from Northwest COG. I haven't read it yet.
I sent it to everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
So that is there. It was very interesting to me how different municipalities are addressing it, or attempting to address it. And I, as I said, I haven't read the survey, so I don't know how it kind of came out, but I look forward to reading that. What else did we see? I don't know. You want to... You probably have better notes than I do on it.
Sure, yeah. We heard from Glenwood Springs, they talked about their e-bike system, which was really interesting, and Grand Junction. We also had an update from Senator Gardner's office, and they were talking about BLM, and they're looking to move the BLM headquarters to Grand Junction. And if you want to comment on it, you go to the BLM site. And they sound... I mean, they think it's a very positive thing, just because of all the jobs it would bring, and just to have it there in that particular area would be great. So anyways, if you want to compliment... Comment on the BLM, you can go to their organizational site. And we also talked about broadband, and I have some things for Clint to look over.
Isn't there already a BLM office in Grand Junction? Or they're just consolidating?
It's... I don't know. It said they're looking to move BLM West Headquarters to Grand Junction.
They do have an office there, but they want to significantly increase its size and number of people that there...
And close the one.
Carbon dude, yeah. It's carbon derek, clearly.
No, this is like the national office they're trying... This is a national political move, and the national theory is they should be where the lands are, not in Washington DC, so if they're amongst the lands, they'd better be better managers. But it's a...
Because they said Colorado currently has no state director for it, and so they... I don't know. They think it would be a really good thing to...
It's all political.
You want to comment? You can. And then they just talked a lot about the broadband stuff. They had a guy from Glenwood Springs who talked about how they operate their broadband system there, and then this guy talked about the thing called FirstNet. It was really interesting, I thought, so.
Anything else?
Nope.
I don't have anything.
I just apologize for missing the meeting last... Well, I guess it was the 19th now. We had our big event in Squaw Valley, and it became abundantly clear to me at that event out there that climate change is real. I mean, we got absolutely poured on for two days and then had 100 mile an hour winds. I mean, it was extremely challenging, but as I was standing there in the rain, it just... And I was prepared to talk about building six, but I'm happy to save that until next week, but, yeah, I kind of haven't had an epiphany while I was out there, and I'm re-inspired to charge ahead on that project.
Okay, we're going to turn our attention now to the public hearing, quasi-judicial hearing, and this is on the Snowmass Center. This is major PUD. And today is... Did you want to grab some dinner on the way home?
Passover, I can't...
Okay. The Snowmass Center, major PUD. Tonight, we have a resolution on the sketch plan. And with that, and while our guests get set up, I'm going to go ahead and continue the public hearing. Clint, should I go ahead and take our lovely comment? She said she was here.
I think that's...
Yeah, you want to come on up and do your comment? Yeah, come on up, because I know you probably want to get out of here. You want to go over to this? Do you want to stay for the whole discussion and comment, or you want to make a public comment to start with?
How long does that discussion?
Oh, it could take an hour.
I'll make my comment.
Okay.
My puppy is waiting for me.
Yes, I'm sure.
Probably chewing my entire place right out. My name's Susan Hirsch, and I live at Seasons 4 for the last nine years. And first, I want to thank you for taking comments from the residents of our community, and I hope they really are taken into consideration versus the weight of the businesses coming in. I would like to request that it's developed like a community. Those of us who live here, it's all about the resort, and I see that you're moving in that direction, you're trying to make it look a little bit townish, but it would be so wonderful if Snowmass Village actually had a village versus all our restaurants and everything else being at the resort. So I'd love to see in the development a downtown street, and then maybe we have some businesses, another restaurant, another bar, maybe a retail, I don't know, Chinese restaurant, I don't know. But if you could walk along the street, sidewalks, maybe different restaurants along, so you could really have a town, rather than just a liquor store and a post office. I noticed in some of the sketches, there were some trees in the center and made it look really nice, but it took away from parking issues. So I'd like to see us maximize having parking in front of the stores, you can run into the post office real quick, you can run into the grocery store real quick, and not have all of it down underground. But primarily, even if it means we have to develop a road, you know, behind the town center, or along behind Clark's, I don't really have the detail of what space you have access to, but a lot of the people I know would just like to see one Main Street, and almost it's called Main Street. Main Street concept, local place to go, more focused on locals and not tourists. The other thing I'd like to talk to is I hear there's going to be looking at a tram or gondola connecting, or a bridge.
That's one option, or a bridge.
Yeah. Strongly disagree with that option. It's going to cover... Interfere with our views, it's going to cost a fortune. I don't... I can't even imagine that people would actually use it. I'd hope you'd look at maybe a dedicated shuttle service instead, which maybe would be more practical and a lot less expensive. And... Oh, I sat here so long, I forgot my stuff. And, oh, I sat here so long, I forgot my stuff. Anyway, that's the gist of it. I really hope you consider giving us a village. I'd love to have a town that I can call my home. I just don't feel that. And I've lived here nine years. And we have to go to the post office to really run into each other. So I don't know if that's in your works or how serious you are about that. Isn't this the only time to bring that up?
No, we'll have a lot more public comment as we move into the next phase.
But it doesn't make any sense for me to repeat this because I just have to say it once, right?
Well, you might have to come back depending on what happens in the preliminary.
Like, and beat you guys with a ski pole on your heads or a hiking pole? All right, so that was it. I basically want to put in a strong plea for a village-town feeling with a main street.
Okay, thank you very, very much, Susan.
Thank you for listening.
And thank you for coming and go home and take care of your puppy.
Yeah, I'm scared.
Susan, real quickly, make sure you come back and get a schwag bag. We don't have any right now because we want to make sure people come with public comment. We're going to give away something, so.
Oh.
You get yourself a free grocery bag.
It's all right, I have lots of them.
That's okay.
Good idea.
Thank you.
Okay. Who's taking the lead here? Brian?
Yep. All right, so, so as the town council knows, there's a draft resolution in your packet, crafted in the affirmative for approval of the Snowmass Center sketch plan for, to actually move forward on the preliminary plan. That's namely Resolution Number 18, series of 2018, the way it's crafted right now. For the most part, it mirrors pretty closely the planning commission approval recommendation for the Snowmass Center to move forward to preliminary plan. I believe you all received electronic copies of that this morning. And I did just want to point out, so we've had several meetings about this application thus far, and staff has tried to listen really closely to the discussion that's been had, the concerns, and craft the conditions of approval associated with this resolution around those discussions. There are a couple that I just want to point out specifically. And the conditions of approval on this resolution start on page four. And wanted to point out specifically Condition Number Four on that page. Basically states and addresses the need for additional view plane analysis and ridgeline protection analysis as part of the preliminary plan application submitted by the applicant. And then building onto that on the next page, Condition Number Five talks about specifically parcel number six. And as a reminder, what we're talking about, who's working for us. But, Michael, can you point out again parcel six for the council? Talking about this, making sure we're really honing in on the size, mass, and scale of that, addressing particularly a lot of the views that people wanted to have protected, the ski mountain, Mount Daly, and things of that nature.
Brian, I would, you know, since you brought this up, there's language in section four that you talk about view simulations of surrounding properties, so forth and so on. And it seems, it seemed to me that that same language should be in that section five.
Okay.
Because what, when I read it, I felt one section was more or less looking at the mass and scale and so forth from the Brush Creek side, and the other was looking at mass and scale from the current, from the current Snowmass Center.
Okay.
I'd like to know what the definition of ridgeline and view plane is.
So we have certain ridgelines that are protected within, in the town, and they're basically focused on certain sections in town. In this case, we'd be focusing on what the buildings would look like from Brush Creek Road and, in particular, the intersection of Kearns, Lower Kearns and Brush Creek Road as it relates to Building Six. So what you're trying to do is determine if the roof line associated with that building actually, from a certain perspective, breaks the ridgeline or the skyline.
The ridgeline of what?
Of the mountains behind. So if you can picture yourself down at the intersection of Lower Kearns and Brush Creek Road and you're looking at, you know, a future building that's actually located right there in the entrance to this development, does the top of that building exceed over the top of the ridgeline of the mountains beyond it?
So how does, okay, so let me get this real clear. You're looking at the very top, at the top of the Big Bird? No. Behind you, rim trail. Rim trail behind you. Oh, okay. Now, yes, the rim trail is one, but let's talk about coming out of Clark's Market now. And we're going to talk about that building 46, that one building that has a coffee shop?
Right.
We talked about it's going to go. But let's say it stays in there. And it blocks the view lines, the entire view of the Big Bird and Sam's Knob. If that were to happen, is that a view plane or is that a ridgeline or what is it when I walk outside the store?
It's a view plane. Yeah, so that's more specific to a view plane. And that's a view that you all can decide that is important enough to preserve and making sure you're dictating this development and this design to make sure you're maintaining those view planes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Those view planes are pretty important and we've heard a lot of comments about it.
Yeah, we have.
Okay.
So moving on to Condition Number Seven on the same page, page number five. It states that the multifamily building on parcel five.
Yeah.
And if you could point that out for us again, Michael. That's this unit here. Parcel five shall be broken up to offer visual corridors to the west for the benefit of the Woodbridge condominiums. So at the site visit, there was a lot of concern about the folks who have condos in the Woodbridge down below, what they're going to be looking at, what they're going to be losing in terms of view planes or view sheds or whatever the case may be. And so this is pretty generic, rather nebulous language that can really be honed in on preliminary plan. But the idea is to maybe see if there could be some view corridors created, possibly maybe create some undulations with this building so it's not such a wall effect for the benefit of the folks in the Woodbridge condos. Moving down to Condition Number Twelve towards the bottom of the page. Preliminary plan application shall provide traffic analysis that offers pros and cons of a two-way main street corridor versus a one-way design. And this was something that was of primary concern to the planning commission, of course. The town council had discussion about it as well. And it became clear to staff there was probably further analysis that needed to be done as part of the preliminary plan submission to figure out what is the, what is the best way to actually have traffic moving through this, what we've been calling the main street corridor. And then finally, on the last page, page six, I wanted to point out Condition Number Seventeen, which states, "As part of the preliminary plan submitted, the applicant shall provide a preliminary feasibility study, offering potential landing sites for a future aerial connection as well as installation and operation costs associated with such a conveyance." So there was conversation on both the planning commission level and the town council level as to whether or not an aerial connection is a more appropriate way to go? Is it something that's in addition to a bridge or is it only a bridge? And we thought this, there was some merit to actually having some of that analysis provided in the next stage of this planning process. But with that, staff does recommend approval of the draft resolution as crafted with any sort of modifications the town council wants to add into the satisfaction of the town council. There were a number of public comments that were provided over the weekend and today that I think you all got hard copies of at your table. Hopefully, you've had a chance to be able to kind of look over some of those, but that's all staff has. Happy to answer any questions you have.
So looking at the planning commission and looking at Condition Number Five, they're also talking about parcel six, about the height. This is a very controversial building. I'm just putting it there. It's very controversial. And I'll tell you, I'm not a, I'm not a fan of that building sitting right there. Find someplace else to put it or do something with it. But that's me, I don't speak for the entire council. Our district, transportation, the traffic analysis and where the bus terminal, transportation system is going, I think it's, looks better than it did when it went through planning commission, but I see there's still some work yet to be done on that flow through.
Yeah, I, I was, I guess, a little concerned about the, I'll show, I'll try to get one of these things to work, I can show you.
You got it.
Okay. So I was a little concerned about this right here.
Yep.
Where this is an exit from the garage, comes up here and you've got to make a left turn, or presumably you make a left turn. You've got traffic, you've got traffic coming off of this, and you also have potentially the bus coming out into traffic. And I was, that looked a little dicey to me as that might be, that might be a difficult turn, you know, for somebody coming out of the parking garage in that, in that manner. It made me wonder if the underground parking garage should have one way in and one way out. And this being the inflow and this being the outflow. Again, I'll just, I'm just going to leave it at that, Richard, but that was something that struck me today as I was musing about this some more.
And how about, the other thing was that whole trail connection up at the top, is that still planned for ups or what was the plan there to get up there?
Yes, we added, in addition to the walkways you see, an access point utilizing stairs between the buildings up that direction. I think on the 19th, we talked about the fact that that's probably not the most desirable public access point, but it is going to be provided and will be part of this project.
If you're a mountain biker, how are you getting up there?
We did have a, staff had an internal conversation with Public Works, I'm sorry, with the folks down at the Recreation Department about where an access could potentially be for, you know, like you said, mountain bikers or a more gradual access. I mean, I think everybody identifies this as maybe a good access for folks internally, but clearly not the best solution from a larger context for accessing the trails for the greater public. So we're going to, and of course, that is a detail that will have to be ironed out during a preliminary plan.
May I say, may, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm just waiting my turn here, not getting yelled at here. I agree with Planning Commission's Number Five in regards to the height restrictions. These are, Richard, these are just some of the things you've heard before from me as well. I'll just repeat them on the heights. The bridge or the gondola or whatever you want to call it, the person mover from Base Village over, I'm concerned about which direction we're going at in as well. And Number Three, which is probably Number One, is the construction management plan. I haven't seen on here, and that has something to do with the phasing. I just, we just cannot have this community not have a post office or a market like we went through last year with no market. And everybody made plans, we did have a post office, but those are some major items. That's the biggest major item, I think, and that is the construction management, which is, which is the same as the phasing that you referred back to a couple of weeks ago.
Tom, they created some very generic phasing in the application itself, and that's typically reserved more thoroughly for something in preliminary plan.
Yeah, and I've talked about that.
Is that something you would like to see prior to, you know, approval of sketch plan or?
I think before, before preliminary plan is approved correct, I'd like to find out what the discussion is because everybody's been putting this on the back shelf. I mean, when I see people in the post office and people have a concern about the center's remodel, I've never really had anybody complain about too many housing, except one person. And several people have talked about the plus side on the heights, several other people have also didn't care less about the heights, but everybody feels the same about the post office and that part of the phasing. Now, I don't know if you label that as construction management, however you want to label that, Brian.
Okay. I think a phasing plan.
Yeah, and I just don't want to keep putting it back, you know, and all of a sudden we're ready to approve a preliminary plan and I don't, I still don't have any answers to this.
Kick the can down the road.
Yeah.
Yeah. What's your next one? You have another one?
That's it, I only have three, those are three.
I have, I have one. We know that there are 35 and a half more units than, that's a lot, it's almost, okay? And it requires a supermajority vote of council. What is defined as a supermajority? Is it the four of us? No, it means Alyssa.
Maybe three in this case.
Well, it's three out of four.
Well, I'm asking John.
That's right. I was waiting for you to finish your question.
So is it the three out of the four?
Yeah, it's present and seated.
Okay, three out of four. Okay. In fact, this whole proposal is, seems like everything is a supermajority.
Well, there's two main components. There's the dimensional capacity in terms of residential that you're talking about now, and also the height, the variance on the height.
Madam Mayor?
Yep.
May I?
Yep, I'm just reading back through the planning commission.
Yeah, no, no, it's okay.
Okay.
Go ahead, keep going and I'll, what I wanted to just ask about, early, very early on, I guess there was a comment made to alert us about a parking reduction from code.
Oh, that's right.
And we've, I don't think we've, we've, at least I don't remember us clearly articulating what that looked like. So I'd like to take the time now to see if we can at least get out on the table what the parking, what the parking requirement would have been at, you know, at full requirement. Let's look at what, look again at what has been put together for parking and see, kind of see where we are. And perhaps, Richard, you would give us your, you know, your justification for whatever reduction, you know, you're asking for, but we'll have it all in kind of one place at one time and.
Yeah, that's absolutely the way it would be done is both in the code, there's a description of how a reduction in parking can be accomplished. And we would provide the space by space allocation of what land uses, what the parking generation would be, really the whole rationale that is laid out so that anyone can see what it means on a peak time, an average time, and a low season time. And excellent questions.
Well, is that something, is that something that waits for preliminary or is some of that known now? I mean, you pretty much have an idea of how many parking spaces.
We had it in that wayback.
Are included in here.
Yep, yep.
And I mean, I don't remember the number offhand, but, so would, do we, I mean, I guess this is a question for staff. Has staff calculated or does staff calculate what the, you know, what the total requirement would have been?
Not at sketch.
Not at sketch?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's in the preliminary and it's in the requirements and it's several, several pages long.
Okay.
There's a lot of detailed work that goes into the traffic, the transportation impact analysis. And once they have an idea of exactly what they're proposing, that's when they'll retain a traffic consultant to develop a very, very detailed report.
Okay, thank you, John.
Mm-hmm.
So I would, let me just, let me understand something here. So if they come back in with the thirty-five and a half more units than the original way of comprehensive plans build-out analysis chart, so it would come in with the parking analysis and traffic analysis associated with the thirty-five and a half, correct?
Well, it's going to be what the project is as a whole when they re-envision it. Now, if they're adding thirty-five, they're definitely going to have to accommodate that.
All the parking.
But I don't, I don't want to get into specifics, because they don't know. I mean, this is what you've got, and you're at the stage now do you want to say, yeah, no, 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 you've got fatal flaws in this sketch plan? Or are you willing to let them develop refined concepts that go through a preliminary plan? That's really the stage you're at now. You've identified a lot of areas of concern, you've included those in their conditions. If you, if you, at the conditions in the resolution, there's three different provisions that talk about, coordinate with staff to further design the public transportation, the location, and that's one. Sorry, I feel a sneeze coming on. The location of parking and circulation of traffic throughout the development. Further engineer design to assure convenience. And then the last one is a specific analysis of two-way or one-way. So you've got three conditions in your sketch plan resolution saying, you better address all of these. And then you add in all the code sections, which, as I said, run to several pages just under, and that is section O of the requirements. So we've gone through from A to N to get to O. And it's a long one, and it's difficult, and it's expensive. And to try and require that at a sketch plan, which is supposed to be a give-and-take kind of discussion about feasibility, it makes our development process more rigorous than it already is. And it is rigorous, especially with a development of this size and scope.
Okay, I have a couple of items that were not, were in the Planning Commission resolution to us, but not carry forward into our resolution. And I would like just to put them out on the table to see if there's something we would like to add. So, where is it?
There's one at the visual terminus at the east end of the Main Street.
Twelve and thirteen, okay. So the first one is, "The Main Street component at the site plan shall be designed to foster a pleasing experience for pedestrians while accommodating traffic and parking."
Your suggestion is to include that in the council?
Include that, yeah.
As just one more criteria?
I mean, it's just, it's just sort of turning around some of the other ones that are in there, but...
Well, would you add that to number twelve in your resolution?
Very possibly.
We, I recall removing that from the resolution, feeling it was redundant with condition number eleven as drafted. But if you like that language better, or if it's better crafted, we can add it to it, add it to what we have, or...
Right, it adds emphasis.
Okay.
Yeah, I think so, because eleven kind of hits vehicular access first, and then pedestrian second. And I think this one just flips it around the other way.
Bob, which condition specifically is that?
It was number twelve from the Planning Commission.
If I could make him a suggestion, I think eleven has its own focus. And if you look at twelve in the current resolution, the town councils, if you read that sentence, and then you add on versus one-way design, "In order to foster a pleasing experience for pedestrians while accommodating traffic and parking." So you're grabbing the last clause in twelve of the Planning Commission, and you're adding it to the end of twelve in the town council. I think you're carrying forth that into the analysis of one-way, two-way, which is where it belongs. But the parking and the circulation are almost a separate focus, which you cover in number eleven in your resolution.
Okay. And then number thirteen in the Planning Commission shows, or says, "Attractive pedestrian walkways, connections, crosswalks, gathering areas shall be further designed in detail for the center, transportation facility, parking lots, and proposed trails, with the goal of generating vitality, facility, vehicular efficiency, and assuring pedestrian safety throughout the development." I think that that is important because it relates to this, the concept of gathering spaces and generating vitality, and which I don't think I saw in other, in any of the other conditions that were in the TC resolution.
Okay.
So you would add that in its entirety?
Yes, I would.
And it looks like on the town council resolution, thirteen and fourteen are open for... They were placeholders.
Yeah.
Because we jumped from twelve to fifteen, so thirteen
That's pretty amazing.
jumps very nicely into...
Fits in the right spot.
Yep, yep.
I meant to do that.
That's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Bill, do you have anything?
Yeah, I think my concerns are similar to what Bob was saying. This area, I like the idea of having a transportation center, but I really think this needs to be more of a roundabout. This needs to be one-way. And as the mayor was saying, this building, if it needs to stay, I'd rather see the parking go away than the view planes in this area.
You might as well get rid of that building forty-six. I'm just, I'm just saying right now.
But I think if the transportation, everybody came in here, and there was a roundabout, and there was...
That's a good idea.
You know, then we can send them right down here, and they could exit, you know, down there. And that way, we'd have a cleaner flow this way, and people could drive through. I just think too-late traffic here is going to be a real problem. The one thing that I've heard loudest from our constituents is the height of these buildings.
Right.
And my experience just going to a lot of ski resorts is that the busiest places that I visit are the smallest. So the smallest little bars, the smallest little restaurants are always packed, whereas next door, there may be a much larger facility, and there's nobody in there. So it's just, I mean, if there's a way to make these really attractive, smaller, commercial operations, and if you have to have the height, I mean, I'd rather see the height back up against the hillside than right up here in front of everybody.
Yeah, that's what we, that I've heard too. And that's interesting. About what size are some of those bars? Size of tasters, and...
Yeah, or even smaller.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, it's just, it's amazing to me that that's just the nature of it.
That says a little bit about social science, how to engineer a business.
Yeah. I mean, the ranger station is a pretty good example, too. That place is always busy. Granted, it's small, but it's always busy.
So is there a, I really think the variance, that all the variances, particularly the height variance for what Bill is talking about, has got to be attended to. That's number one complaint from...
Lot six.
Lot six. It's number one complaint from all the community. And the size of the project is a... The part, yeah. And the size of the entire project is kind of challenging for many people in our community, and from the comments we've heard. I won't, if you, if you had to downsize this project, have you already talked about that?
Well, we have in the course of this sketch plan, because we've already made a number of modifications, and particularly focused on building six. You know, I think, really wanted to hear all of your opinions about how the resolution was crafted, and what's included. And I think the first thing that would be important from the applicant's standpoint is to fully appreciate the fact that this is sketch planned. And John articulated very carefully that we cannot solve all of the things that you've described, or have the facts in front of you for each one of these. And what is important to us, I think, is to get to the point where the resolution deals with the level of concern, that you've communicated that to us in various areas. That we all know that circulation, and building height, and construction phasing are going to be major topics as we go forward, because they are. And those are the critical things. And believe me, the applicant understands those are being crucial. I have no more answers for you at this point in time. And so we have tried to operate in the sense that we will respond as best we can all through this process, but we have a lot more to go forward. Tonight, we're missing Jordan Sarik. And of course, he is hugely crucial. His father passed away, and he's been called
Oh, no.
back to be with his family. So I just wanted you to all understand that that's why Jordan isn't here today. So it's crucial for our team that all of us participate. What I think would be the most important use of time is to explain the single purpose, I think, we have in the resolution, which by and large, from the applicant's point of view, is well-drafted. And it gives us plenty of direction about moving to the next stage. And there are many more stages and steps, and the questions that you all have are certainly going to be answered. It's the area that we would like to be in a position to feel good about going forward is dealing with the question that is really describing height. And that's, to give you the line item, that's on line ninety-one primarily of the draft resolution. And in there, it describes that there is a height variation. That doesn't really communicate properly for us. As you all know, we have a project made up of many different story heights. And when you have a site like we have, topography, parking, access, those numbers go up and down.
Right.
And so to deal with this specifically with numbers at the sketch plan is really problematic. And what we would hope the council could see is a way to have language like this. "The applicant is requesting to rezone to mixed-use two district, which has a thirty-eight-foot height limit." So that establishes that we're moving toward an actual district from the SBA. "Height variances for the project are shown in the sketch plan where all parcels include buildings with two-point-five to four-point-five stories of occupied space." And so we want to project the multiple heights. Bill's point about where the height is best allocated is to the back of the site. It has a backdrop, it's got topography and so forth. So to obtain height variances at the preliminary plan, all conditions of the land use code will have to be met, including community benefit, the ridgeline analysis, and the three-quarter vote of town council. And if that were placed as the instructions, it's an acknowledgement that there's varying heights, then we don't have to go forward with no flexibility for design. And we do not have architectural design completed. So literally, in the conditions we have, you could move twenty feet and find yourself with a different height measurement in the same buildings. And so we would be very grateful if that kind of language could be placed in lieu of the way it's currently written, where there's a specific height.
Richard, that is very, very helpful language.
And I think it gives us all the benefit of good design. Whether or not this building is precisely the way it's shown on this plan, I can very much guarantee you, it won't be. Because we have so much more work ahead of us.
The only concern that I have about the language, that language, is the two-and-a-half to four-and-a-half stories of occupied space. And I would be okay with that if we could add something specific about parcel six. Because that, I mean, that probably gives, I think that parcel gives everybody in the council here the most agita. The mass and the scale of that.
The word is actually agita.
Well, okay. Hey.
Give me agita.
I think that gives, you know, that's the, it has, that parcel has multiple concerns. From the Brush Creek side, it's mass and scale. From the Snowmass Center side, it's view plane. So I would, I guess, there's a, there is a, this was a finding. This was a finding in the Planning Commission's resolution, finding number seven. "To the extent necessary for sketch plan level review, the application does not satisfy the review criteria for exceeding the underlying maximum height limit as specified in sixteen A five thirty C seven A, specific to the height, mass, and scale of the mixed-use building on parcel six. Said building needs to be further articulated and evaluated during preliminary plan as specified in section three." So that's in the conditions. So again, I just feel that I would be, I'm comfortable with your language, with the caveat that we add some specific language about parcel six.
I think that's a good approach. It puts us into the condition where, in the preliminary plan, we all collectively sort that out. My reading of what that paragraph says is quite similar to what line one eighty-eight says in the resolution already drafted. It speaks about the concerns of view, and massing, and visual concerns at the entry. It speaks about Brush Creek Road, the views from within the project looking out, accommodating existing site conditions as part of the preliminary plan submittal, and that architecture design and illustrations demonstrate the height, mass, and compatibilities have been addressed through architecture and landscape architecture.
Yeah, I think that covers, that covers it, that's fine.
The town code calls for no more than thirty-six or thirty-eight.
Thirty...
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight. So...
And do you want the finding to be, Richard takes offense to it, because I think it says forty-four feet, and it says... But do you want the finding to be that, as presented at sketch plan, variances will be required? They will require a supermajority? And then you've stated it. Then the two findings, get to where you want to go, you have to consider all, I mean, the two conditions, four and five, get to, these are all the things you have to consider.
Right.
Well, the, on building six, including whatever final configuration it may have, the two-and-a-half stories is the objective. It's the mirror of the Snowmass Center. So the street can have building facades that match one another, that have this compatibility of scale. And the existing Snowmass Center, we know very well. It would be higher than it is, because some of the heights would be to the front, but it's no higher than it is, if you understand that, because it's just the placement on the rooftop. That area, and to get to two-and-a-half stories on that, and I think that's a huge objective of that part of the project, because that's what makes the street.
Whose objective? It's not our objective, it's your objective, right? It's not our objective, it's your objective, right?
Well, I think it's everybody's objective, because it's the statement that's really in the comprehensive...
No, it's not mine.
I, I think, I think that the height and mass and scale of the parcel six is, is an issue with even at two-and-a-half, potentially an issue.
Right.
Not is, but potentially an issue, even at two-and-a-half stories of occupancy. From, from the feedback we've been getting, um, that could be, or that seems to be a, um, you know, a potential issue.
Well, then, the, the finding is that building six is not acceptable as shown on the sketch plan presented, and there are ways in which further study may make it acceptable, but we have to go through, meet those criteria, provide at the preliminary level the possibility of what building six can be.
You know, what, what we don't wanna do either is not give you the guidance that you need to get, get us close, you know, get us on the same page, so when you come back with, at, at preliminary, you know, we are more in line with each other. So that, I mean, that wording is, that wording for me is fine. Um, if that requires a different kinda condition, um, Brian, then we just need to write it up that way.
Got a lot of work to do on this resol. Yeah, there's, I, I think Richard has added quite a bit of value in what his suggestion might be. It appears to me most of the sticking point is the size, the height variances being requested for building six. Um, and to the extent, we, yes, we have huge transportation and parking issues, so they appear right now, so obviously all the traffic analysis is going to be very important. The notion over on building six, in terms of breaking that up, was another issue that we've talked about. The two-way street, well, I'm repeating myself, um, that is a concern. I, recognizing that Bill is, is the mountain biker, along with Tom up here, uh, I'm going to assume the suggestion of trail access at the top will be resolved by, uh, trail staff, rec center, and the developer. Um, as we've said earlier, it's better to push the height vari, variances up to the back buildings versus the front buildings, and not to destroy the view planes, either from Brush Creek or in front of the center. Those are the, the big areas, and if you guys can work through the language and bring back a revision to the resolution, I think we can get there. Is that, what else did I miss?
Just, uh, I don't know how we're gonna resolve the bridge or tramway situation. How does that happen? And maybe that's a question for Clint, is that a study involved in this, or, or Richard? Okay.
The condition right now is that they need to tell us, go through that, do that analysis, and help us with that decision.
So, 'cause I mean, that's, that's something that's lingering, as it was one of my numbers, so I'll just leave it at that, and we know what has to happen in preliminary.
Yeah. The way this is written, and at least our interpretation, is that we need to go through an analysis. There are a couple of options on the table. Um, there is good information available to help the town make a good decision about what they want to do in that regard, and so the obligation is for us to bring the information forward. It's not an obligation to have a decision made about this at this level, and that obligation...
Yeah, that's correct. And I understand that. It's just, I'm just reiterating my, one of my points.
But I think it's important for us, because if it's three-quarters of a million dollars con, contribution to a bridge that's gonna cost one-point-eight, or whatever the final number is, I mean, we really have to be convinced that we love this bridge. Um, I'm not sure that I'm there, um, as far as that being the public purpose. Um, I mean, it's, it looks like a straw to me, you know, from the base village. So business can drain down there. I mean, I just, but I really, I, I'm all about, um, walking in public transportation, and if we could create something that is truly appealing to the community, like if this bridge continued on to Mountain View, and then, um, as, as Tom, I think, was kind of addressing earlier with our transportation and our pedestrian access from, uh, the mall over to Mountain View, I mean, if there was a way to walk, say, on a boardwalk from, uh, the mall all the way down to Mountain View, and then back across to the base village, maybe that's something that people would truly come to the village to do. Um, then I think it starts to have some real merit and some value as a public purpose. Um, as it stands now, I think, um, it's debatable.
Yeah, the community purpose, we'll really get into that on this project, preliminary. I didn't even wanna go there with the seven fifty.
I'd like to make a motion on resolution number eighteen with, to go forward to preliminary as the app, with the applicant's requested language, and our language changes accordingly, so I'm just gonna move this forward, and it seems like we're, we're beating the same subjects down pretty good here. So I'd like to make a motion to move forward.
Boy.
Brian, are you comfortable that you've got all the amend, you know, all the changes that we've been, we've been talking about, and Richard's been proposing, or would you guys prefer, would you prefer to...
Bring it back.
Bring it back to us?
Yes.
I think we'd like to take a shot at it, to make sure we're hitting all the points that you guys wanna see.
Okay.
Do you wanna resend?
I will bring my motion back.
Staff, staff is requesting that we come back. What date might we be ready?
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
I just made that decision. I just like that.
Two weeks. So that date would be, this is the second, so the sixteenth?
Yep.
Okay. You fine for the sixteenth?
We're good.
Okay. So, um, with that said, I will continue the public hearing until the sixteenth of April at four o'clock. Okay.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all, ladies and gentlemen.
Rest of the group?
Okay. Anything else to come before council this evening? Yes, John?
I just wanted to let you know that with regard to the agreements for the Base Village project, that, um, the security for the, um, surplus parking, the deferred parking, the extra parking spaces, they're proposing to guarantee that with not a letter of credit or a bond, but a payment guarantee submitted by the Aspen Skiing Company on behalf of the joint venture. We've, we've read it, it's a half a million dollars, 'cause that's how much the estimate is for the twenty, twenty or twenty-two spaces, we're still discussing that one, but I just wanted to make sure that you, you all knew that the payment guarantee is the way we think it's going to go. It's a lot cheaper for both the applicant and the ski company, and we think that the ski company's good for that.
I'm fine with it. Anybody?
Fine.
All right.
What's the options?
See, we could demand a letter of credit, we could demand a bond.
Too much brain drain for twenty-two.
Like a good way to go.
Yeah.
Okay. Just wanted to let you know that, so you weren't in the dark.
Okay. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Uh, so moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second? Bill wants to stick around, it looks like, I don't know.
All in support?
Aye.
Post same sign.
[music]